...meeting, thanks to everyone who was able to make it. Appreciate the members of the community for being here as well. Call meeting to order and request your own please.
Mr. Newlock?
Here.
Ms. Kalanowski?
Here.
Mr. Bush is absent, Mr. President Gero is absent.
Here. Please stand for the pledge.
My pledge is to the life of the United States of America. To the republic of which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite and just as far out.
Requested motion for approval of board minutes for our February 3rd and 24th meetings. You guys have had an opportunity to look at those.
Thank you.
Mr. Newlock? Mr. Kalanowski, roll call please.
Mr. Newlock?
Yes.
Excuse me, Mr. or Ms. Kalanowski?
Yes.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
President McCullough?
Yes. Now to tonight's agenda and issues of directions. Could I have approval for tonight's agenda, please? So move?
Second.
Mr. Bush, second by Ms. Kalanowski, roll call please.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Ms. Kalanowski?
Yes.
Mr. Newlock?
Yes.
President McCullough?
Yes. Communications to the board, Mr. Sawyer.
Thank you, President McCullough, and we're going to begin this evening with a conversation related to COVID-19 specifically and the actions taken for preparedness by the school district. So clearly, I believe we all will agree that we're living in unprecedented times associated to the pandemic that's taking place across the world related to COVID-19 or the coronavirus. So clearly, the school district has sent out multiple communications, but we want to talk about COVID-19 specifically this evening and our preparedness as a school district, and talk about the actions we've taken and the next steps that we anticipate as a school district based upon the fluidity of the situation and the constant communication and updates that we're receiving from a wide variety of resources, dominantly from the Ohio Department of Health, the Franklin County Department of Health, and then a local task force that was formed that has some experts, some of whom were in the room this evening, that will have an opportunity to also provide an update to the Board of Education and answer specific questions from a medical perspective based upon their practice, expertise, and research capacity specifically related to the infectious disease that is presented. So there's a couple websites that I'm going to make reference to. I'm not going to drill through them because you're going to see that they're going to be in apparent resource document that's actually been prepared that equates our next communication from the school district to our families to talk specifically about the next steps of what to expect over the course of the next 72 hours realistically. And then I'll talk a little bit about the information we've also communicated with staff members and the ongoing nature of what's specifically happening for them based upon the information we're receiving again from the daily updates from the State Department of Health as well as the Franklin County Department of Health and the governor's office. So we'll talk also about that. We'll lay out the plan specifically for Board of Education members and the public, and then we're actually posting the videos so that everyone can see it to understand what's coming. But the next communication that our families and students will receive in the school district is really comprehensive to give them the next steps in anticipation for what will come to them from their classroom teachers by Wednesday. So all of that will make sense in just a few minutes. So this first website I'm going to reference that we're using for background and research in conversations with our local experts is from the Ohio Department of Health. And Dr. Acton, as the Director of Public Health, has done a tremendous job within the state of Ohio to specifically provide daily updates related to the coronavirus and everything that's happening specifically for Ohio and the presence of what it means for community spread and/or other actions that the community should be taking in reference to COVID-19. The next website that I'm going to reference is specifically from the State Department of Education. And again, not going to drill into it because this is a daily update that's coming to us as a school district about what to expect related to the most frequently asked questions related to COVID-19 from an operational standpoint. What does this mean for student learning? What does it mean for student testing? What does it mean for finances? What does it mean for free and reduced student lunches? Federal guidance, State Department guidance. So this is constantly changing to include some legal parameters associated to what's permissible. I will tell you in listening to the governor in conversations both with the Ohio Department of Education, the Buckeye Association of School Administrators, specifically for superintendents, it's been made abundantly clear that there will be flexibility related to the state statutory requirements as necessary based upon the pandemic in the state of Ohio. So as this continues to unfold and we understand specifically what it's going to mean for students and families related to teaching and learning for the rest of our school year, there are specific things that might have to happen through the General Assembly or the governor's office to make sure that no students are harmed in the end result based upon statutory requirements that are required for graduation, as an example, in the state of Ohio. All those things are currently being discussed, they're just not front and center in the conversation because that's the long term versus the short term. So our focus as a school district is planning the short term for what has to happen realistically in our school calendar. If I get to the right one. Here. So this is our current school calendar for the 2019-2020 school year. On March 12th, the governor of the state of Ohio produced an executive order stating that all public schools, charter schools, charter non-public schools, all schools in the state of Ohio are closed at the end of school on Monday, March 16th. I'll pause there for a second. Since that executive order came out, I have since, based upon the information that we continue to receive, we made a decision on late Friday afternoon as a safeguard, not knowing what the weekend would produce because you're here on Sunday night. So Saturday, new information became available. On Friday as a safeguard, one of the things that we had conversations about amongst the leadership team at the building principals and cabinet was that all students should go home prepared on Friday in the event the weekend would produce new information because of the first case being in Franklin County, specifically Columbus. So when that came out Friday afternoon to us about 1:30, we immediately put plans in place with faculty and staff for students to go home with as much personal belongings as possible as well as the technology that's age appropriate for specific grade levels. The majority of our school campus did that across the school campus in all grades. So students were able to take their personal belongings home, which was good because on Saturday, new information was presented through recommendations through the Ohio Department of Health that we discussed specifically with my task force friends that I'm going to introduce to you in just a minute, to talk about their expertise and what their recommendations would be in relationship to having schools still on Monday. The executive order by the governor begins at the end of the school day on Monday. I chose on Saturday to notify our families that Monday would become a calamity day and we would not be in school. Students will stay home. On a calamity day, our faculty and staff do not report either. So no faculty, staff, or students are scheduled to be on our school campus tomorrow, and then the executive order will take place at the end of the day. So tomorrow is a calamity day for coding purposes currently with the State Department of Education because that's what it will be coded until they come up with whatever the reality of COVID-19 and its impact on schools will be as it works its way through the federal process that's necessary and the state processes that are necessary. So we do not have school tomorrow despite the executive order not being implemented till tomorrow afternoon. The executive order begins at the close of school tomorrow in the state of Ohio. I will tell you in conversations with other superintendents, there's very few school districts that are actually having school tomorrow. Most of them have now gone to a calamity day or if they're not on a spring break. There are some schools in Ohio that actually begin spring break tomorrow. So every school has a different calendar, so it just depended. The executive order extends through Sunday, April 5th. Our kids are supposed to come back on Monday, April 6th, which is probably the most frequently asked question I'm getting. Do you really think it's realistic that students are coming back on Monday, April 6th? I'm going to tell you the answer is no. I do not believe it is realistic that our students will return on Monday, April 6th. Truth be told, based upon everything I know and the conversations we're having with the health officials and the local experts, I find it highly improbable that our students will return for the remainder of the school year. I will be very surprised if that becomes possible. That means it's going to be very difficult in many ways, but we will find solutions for our students to be successful in the expectation of remote learning between now and the end of the school year. I believe it's iterative and it's going to be a fluid situation, as I've stated. We're going to continue to get more and more information. Right now, we're planning to get to Sunday, April 5th. That's target number one. Then I'm going to tell you, behind target number one is target number two that gets us to Monday, in my world, April 20th. That's the next target that we're planning for already because it provides a 14-day incubation period post-spring recess. So realistically, we're probably going to do this in chunks because I think the governor will tell us before April 5th if students are not coming back to school. And then realistically define, is it for the rest of the year or is it for a next defined period of time? Our period of time for the next chunk pending the executive order change would probably extend minimally to Monday, April 20th to allow the incubation period that's currently recommended. We still have families in our school district that we anticipate will be traveling. We have not done any self-reporting process. We did have that conversation with health officials and it was not recommended. There's no way for us to actually know who went where and actually if they did or did not self-report. So they felt that it wouldn't be overly beneficial given the fact that their trajectory illustrates that they don't anticipate from a health professional perspective that students are likely to return before the end of the school year. We will continue that conversation as we continually learn more. Tonight, I'm going to focus on, from planning purposes, when I get into the specifics, what we're doing to get to Sunday, April 5th. But before I do that, I'm going to allow the professionals that are part of a task force in New Albany. So we formed at my request, I contacted the city of New Albany, Plain Township specifically, and then some local people within our community to ask for recommendations. We have many, many faculty, professional faculty that are parents within our school district. So I'm just going to tell you who these people are, and then some of them are here tonight, so I'll ask them to stand and I'm going to give them an opportunity to talk to you from their perspective about what's happening with COVID-19, the work that we've done to date specifically as the school district, working with the task force, and their recommendations or what they might anticipate what's going to happen as we look towards the future for the remainder of the school year. So from a school perspective, it's myself, John Hoods, Director of Student Services and Safety. Brian Whitekurt is our school nurse. Brian is also a nurse practitioner, so valuable to the committee. Patrick Galloway is Director of Communications to help with communications information. City officials, Joe Stefanoff is the city manager, Scott McAfee for Public Relations, again for communications purposes. And then for first responders, we have Brett Jones. And then also from Plain Township, Chief Hubler for the Fire Department and Assistant Fire Chief Rupp are joined specifically with Ben Collins as the Township Administrator. From the Heights Center, we have Phil Height, who is one of the persons on the task force. Angela Douglas, the former food pantry person, here's Phil. So if you're here tonight, stand up when I say your name, I apologize. I have my back to some people, it's not purposeful. So there's Phil. Angela Douglas is here, she's now the Heights Center's Director of Operations, but also has been working with us with the food pantry, with Sarah and many others. Specifically, Joe Mezzola, who's the Franklin County Department of Health, for Public Health Commissioner, participates in the conversations with us. Nikki Layman from his office is the Environmental Health Director and the Assistant Health Commissioner, who's also been participating in the conversations to give advice to the school district and give us direction and recommendations of our next steps from the Franklin County Department of Health. I talked about our township people and some of our most important friends that have given us the greatest wisdom possible. Paul Bean is an emergency room physician at Grant Hospital for Mount Carmel. He apologizes he's working tonight in the ER and we actually had a text exchange about 6:30. And he apologized he could not come. Chance Spalding is a trauma surgeon for Ohio Health, again, working this evening, will not be here. Dr. Steve Cannowitz for Internal Medicine Physician is here. So Dr. Cannowitz will have an opportunity to tell you from his perspective what we're doing, what we've done well, and what we should continue to do and do next, as will Brian. John Barnard, or Amy Valasek is a parent in our school district. She's at Nationwide Children's Hospital. She's a pediatrician that works at the OSU Wexner Medical Center here in New Albany. John Barnard is the Chief of Pediatrics and the President of Nationwide Children's Hospital. He's been consulting with the task force as well. The Wando Oli Iola, I believe is her pronunciation, and I apologize if I crucified it. She's the Chair in Department of Family Medicine. She's a new parent in our school district that recently came to the community. And then Mark Weir from the OSU Environmental Health Services specifically as an infectious disease expert. So he's participating as well. So we're very, very fortunate as a school district that I've been able to lean into these persons, as have others, to try to talk about where we go as a school district specifically that has been front and center because we are a mini-city within New Albany with 5,000 kids and 650 employees on our school campus every single day, as well as then consulting with the city and the Plain Township folks to talk about what resources and information we can provide for the greater good of the entire community beyond just the school district. So I'm going to pause for a second before we get into specifics about action planning and let Dr. Cannowitz specifically provide you from his perspective an update on COVID-19 and talk about the experience with the task force and recommendations as we look forward.
Steve?
Thank you. So I'm sure most of you saw the governor's meetings this afternoon. I think for me, being a member of this community, there's three things that we really need to take away from this. For us, if we talk about how do we help our neighbors, how do we help each other, how do we get through this? The number one thing is, you have got to start isolating yourself. It's us and our kids. The, I mean, the health system is already overwhelmed as it is. I mean, I just look at my emails, I look at the phone calls that are coming in, I can't keep up. You multiply that by all the hospitals and the burners rooms and that sort of thing. In my opinion, it's changed even from two weeks ago to where it is today. But I cannot encourage you and demand that we have got to isolate. You know, you make jokes about it, we're like, oh my gosh, this is crazy, it's ridiculous, whatever. But look at the number of fragile children that we have in our community that are on ventilators, that have respiratory problems, that are two doors down from us. Those are the people that we're trying to protect. We're trying to protect the elderly that are our parents, our grandparents who live in this community. You know, people are very focused on the number of cases that we have. And what Dr. Acton has said is, we don't care about the numbers anymore. It's, it's, it doesn't mean anything because we've now tracked, you know, the first case symptoms back to, you know, end of January now. So this has been in the community for a long time. I mean, I know from a personal experience, I mean, I can think back in February when I had patients coming to my office, they tested negative for the flu. What'd you say? And I've got one of those crazy bugs that's going around. Well, it was probably coronavirus. And to this day, we just, you know, the testing isn't there yet. We don't have the mass testing, so who cares about the numbers? We know that 40%, 7% of us are going to get it. So let's stop thinking about, you know, am I going to get it? You think, yeah, I'm going to get it. But let's think about how do we reduce the risk? How do we mitigate this big peak that Dr. Acton keeps talking about? And then slow that curve down so that the people who are sick can actually get taken care of. People say, well, what's the difference between the flu and COVID? Because they have very, very similar symptoms. And why do one, you know, a certain set of people die from one, this is the other? And one of the big things is, people from the flu that die from the flu, they usually die from secondary bacterial infection, whether it be pneumonia, meningitis, something like that. Those things have blood signs we can treat with antibiotics. With COVID, most of those people have what's called ARDS. It's a respiratory distress, it's a, basically an obliteration of the lungs. There is no treatment for that. The only treatment is you put them on a ventilator, you put them on a breathing machine, and you let their body heal. Well, the bottom line is that if you don't have enough ventilators in town, guess what? Then it becomes pick and choose who's going to survive. And so that's why, that's why people die is we don't have the resources and we have no treatment for this sort of thing. So as much as I want my three kids to be out there playing and running around and doing that sort of thing and how much it hurts when we have to say, kid, you know what? For the next three weeks, four weeks, five weeks, six weeks, this is where we're going to be. You know, fortunately, you know, my joke is, is that my 16-year-old son who's spent, you know, the last two years up in his room with doors closed on Xbox, you know, he's probably done the right thing. But that's the bottom line is that we have got to do this. And without the community's support, it doesn't matter. Because if we have half of the neighborhood just out and about running around, then we've lost the whole point of doing what we're supposed to be doing. Going on spring break, I understand people have plans and travels and that sort of thing, including myself, but it does nobody any good other than just extends this whole disaster that we're, that we're a part of. You know, I have no doubt in my mind that there won't be school for the rest of the year. I have no doubt in my mind that this is going to go until, you know, into the summer months. But we're hoping that by the time summer comes around, there'll be things that we can handle on a day-to-day basis. But right now, I mean, I'm, you know, I look at my, my personal practice and saying, you know what? I'm not accepting regular visits anymore. If you're sick, I'll see you. Not through special stuff because there's mandates from the state now that primary care offices are not even allowed to see somebody who has symptoms of COVID. If you have a symptom, you will be directed somewhere else. We are not even allowed to see you. You know, the, my friend who I was talking to is a pediatrician down in North Carolina. UNC put out a mandate that no well checks, no ADD checks, no depression follow-ups, no, nothing that's healthy. You're only going to see sick, non-respiratory people for the next 30 days, you know? So, and I, I guess that is a plea to the community, you've got to get this out, you've got to talk to the kids, you've got to talk to other parents. They've got to isolate. Is there any other questions about COVID, about transmission, about what we're dealing with?
That's in the discussion point of whether kids should be allowed to interact with one another in the neighborhoods in any capacity. So you're advising against that?
Absolutely. So what we're finding is that the kids who are the carriers of this, who are most likely asymptomatic, they're the ones who, you know, could be running around giving it to everybody. You know, even last week, I'm sure a lot of us had this kind of philosophy, you know, I feel okay. So, you know, partner, kids, whoever it is, let's go get a quick bite to eat, let's go somewhere. Because we all feel fine, but we're forgetting what we feel today, what we could have infected, you know, 10 days ago and two days, you know, we're going to have symptoms. I think the other thing that I brought to bring up is, you know, the, how harsh the reality of this is, is that Columbus firefighter who is positive, I mean, you think of the reality, is that, that fire station could be rightfully shut down. But what happens if that happens to our fire station? You know, we have all the paramedics, firefighters, we're done. And, you know, who's going to come and kind of, you know, right the ship if they're all done with? So, you know, it sounds crazy. But again, the whole point of this, over the next 30 days plus, is so that we can slow this process down so that we can take care of the patients that we can take care of, so that the people who are having heart attacks, that are getting into car accidents or having strokes, that we have the resources to take care of them. And yeah, so that means, you know, we got to, you know, you can't be out running around. Hope my kids are running around, but. Anything else, any other questions or?
So student athletes, like my daughter's track field in the high school. So they've got like their own workouts that they have to do because they can't, their season just started and now just, you know, is that cool? Going to gyms? No.
Gyms or?
Just a second, Dr. Cannowitz. The audio cannot be heard, so John, as for president, is going to have to recognize the question from the chair and then repeat the question for audio because persons listening at home when we post it will not be able to hear. Can you create that process or please?
I'd be happy to. So just tell me if I'm clear on that. The question is, for student athletes who are, well, would have had their spring sport now, they have, you know, they have exercise plans, they have, you know, a number of things that they're supposed to be working on. Obviously, going to a place like the gym, the school's going to be, the school's not available. So what are you suggesting kind of staying away from those public places?
So you're staying away from the public places, you're instituting, we, you know, we know there is plenty of land and plenty of property and plenty of parks where you can go run. I mean, my son, you know, he's on the track team, cross-country. So the bottom line is, is that it, again, defeats the purpose if we're taking these teenagers, these youths, putting together in a gym, let alone, and then saying, hey, go work out, I know you feel fine, then you're going to come home. And I, you know, I know, you know, in my case, who lived three doors down from a very fragile individual, I think catastrophic. That my daughter will then go and play at that house? I just don't think we can, we can risk that sort of thing. So the bottom line is just, again, it's isolation.
President Volibear?
Yeah. Dr. Height? If you just direct your question through the chair, we're going to pretend this is like a legislature.
Then I'm hearing conflict because there's this six, six-foot rule applied and according to what is being said, don't go out, be around people. So for our own guidance, because we're going to try and keep open a little, not, not the physical activity area, but we're hearing stay six feet apart. And then I'm hearing you say, but don't even go outside and be with a group. It's one of the things that concerns me is we need to keep kids healthy, we need to keep them exercising. So what rule do we follow?
So, so again, just the question so we can make sure everybody hears it. And I just also want to clarify, I know this is not our typical way of doing things. We typically don't allow public discussion during these times, but it is a unique meeting that we're in tonight. So I think we're going to be a little flexible with our rules. Question being, obviously, we, you know, we're a healthy community, healthy New Albany. We like to keep people active, we want our kids to be out and about. There's seemingly some contradictory statements as, as it relates to, of course, people may think there are contradictory statements relating to this idea of the social distancing or the physical distancing of arms length or six feet. How does that mix with the, what we're hearing now from the governor or other recommendations of like, look, you shouldn't even be around other groups of people?
So I, I think you have to look at it from two, three different ways. One is, I guess, go ahead, necessity, okay? If there is a place that you have to be or that you need to go or you need to do, you maintain that six, six feet of separation, okay? What I'm talking about, these are things that we choose to do, you absolutely have to do, there's some sort of alternative that we can come up with, okay? I totally get being outside, roaming around, but we all know, it's like, well, we know how COVID gets into your system. Rub your eyes, rub your nose, rub your mouth. If you keep your hands clean, you don't touch your face, or you're not going to get it. Well, how many times we all think about it, all right, well, we're not going to do it. And as soon as that itch hits, what do you do? You scratch, and then you're like, oh, I shouldn't have done it. So you take a group of youths and you put them outside playing soccer or running or whatever it is, it doesn't take but two people, all of a sudden forget about the handshake or the, you know, the high five or the hug or the cough or the sneeze. So part of it is, and I don't want to say you don't trust the youth, but it's taking that, that element of, oops, I shouldn't have done that, out. And number two, what are the things that we absolutely have to do? Let's time, it's time to be creative. You know, again, you've got parks, you can be on the soccer field, you can, you know, you can play games, you can kick balls, whatever it is, but you don't have to be that close together. You could be on separate sides, okay? So when you talk about intermingling, you know, running and stuff like that, you know, what I envision is you get a group of kids running down, you know, down to the street in a group of four or five, that I would do. But if you have one and they're separated by 10, 15 feet, okay. But again, you know, it's like a lot of things, you give them an inch, they're going to take a foot. So does that make sense? You know, it's about, you know, necessity, what do you have to do? And can you, because you really have to do what you're about to do.
Do you? Thank you. Any questions for board members?
Is it accurate that this gets better with warmer weather or? Because I keep hearing mixed messages on that too.
So.
You have to go, sorry.
I'm on a mic.
So because this coronavirus is unknown to anybody, we don't know what will happen when it turns to warmer weather. Other coronaviruses, when it's warmer weather, we see the decline, but we don't know. And so the fear is that, one, it won't decline, or number two, it will warp into something different and then we're dealing with some other type of virus. So, you know, we're hoping, that's, that's the hope, but we don't know.
Thank you.
Dr. Cannowitz, I know this probably has a number of different perspectives and it's all personal, but just as someone who has to leave the home and go to work and be exposed and then go back into the quarantine home with your family, any recommendations or precautions you're taking as you go in and out of your own home?
That's a great question, issue. So I just left my group, group of 10 physicians. And we just had our, my, our meeting and, you know, they came up with their policies. We all have to get all practice individually. I've chosen to not practice. And when I say that, I am not going to go into the office and see patients. My patients have access to my email, to the portal, to my cell phone. So if there is something like appendicizes or having back pain, belly pain, and I can't deal with it over the phone, then yes, I will find a way to get into the office, have that person come in where I know that the number of people is minimal. then yes, I will find a way to get into the office, have that person come in where I know that the number of people are minimal and I can protect myself and that person as much as possible. Because I do, I mean, I worry, that's part of the reason why I made that decision is that if, if I get sick in that office, we now have 10 physicians that are down and out and that whole office is gone. And whether I disagree or agree with my partners, that's not the point. My point is to you, I want to be able to come home, jump in the shower, get cleaned off and be able to be with my kids and know that, you know what, I did the best I can. But, so yeah, so I, I don't plan on being in that office on a day-to-day basis and only minimally for the people that absolutely have to be seen. Because the other everyone else, I'll, I'll talk on a thing.
So for those who have a job that's not directly medical related, but perhaps are, need to go in or have to go in for, uh, be exposed to other people, maybe with keeping distancing, come home, take a shower before you intermix with the family?
Don't touch, don't, you just go right up. Shout out, yeah.
I'm sure lots of people have lots of questions, but Dr. Canowitz, thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Weicker, as a school nurse and nurse practitioner, do you have anything you'd like to add? Are you ready? Are you sure?
Yeah.
I will just compliment Brian. Um, he's been on the front line. I was going to do, we came up here, but, okay. Um, Brian's been on the front line for us. It's okay, Brian's been on the front line for us as a school district. So, um, Susan Guy is out of the school district presently, um, on a leave of absence. Um, so Brian has actually stepped up as the head nurse within the school district, working specifically with our clinic aides who are LPNs or RNs as well. Um, they've done a tremendous job in trying to provide the day-to-day support, monitor what's happening in our school buildings to keep students safe. Um, if parents report sick, we have immediate conversations. The child has not been in school. Brian has done a wonderful job in trying to help families answer specific questions. Um, we've had several families that were forthcoming about potential issues that they thought might relate to COVID-19. So they did a think out loud conversation specifically with Brian and other staff members. And then Brian was the direct connect to the Franklin County Department of Health on behalf of the school district to have conversations with the State Department of Health and Franklin County Department of Health for the automated reporting line where you can call and answer specific questions, determine if you are in fact at risk, um, and if it's safe for you to be on our school campus. So I just publicly want to thank Brian and the staff for everything they've done when this all started several weeks ago in our school district, because I think they've done a tremendous job with everyone else, but specifically on the medical forefront. Um, we're very fortunate to have Brian, Susan, and then our clinic aides who are also LPNs and RNs, which are right. So thank you very much.
Yeah. I guess we, we try to be the person that's not recognized in the school, obviously. And it's been, um, it's been a challenge. Uh, Mrs. Roy was inviting me to the first meeting about 12 days ago and it's been full speed and craziness, um, ever since. And, uh, um, it has been a challenge, uh, definitely with Mrs. Guy being out, um, keeping track of, you know, just checking in with principals, checking in with any of our administrators and then our clinic staff just to make sure that they're, you know, we kind of, we're kind of vetting whoever comes in that, you know, we try and pretty much send people home at this point, uh, a lot more than we used to. But, uh, it, it's certainly been, um, it's been a very fast pace, as you've all seen that, uh, happening. Um, just reflecting as Dr. Canowitz, um, has been speaking and, um, he's also my collaborating physician. So I work for Steve at, at your door. So, um, so I do, um, speak to him frequently and, and it's been, you know, as a practitioner outside, um, on the front line, um, it, it's going to be interesting. Um, I went to all of my patients that I see in their facilities yesterday and, and said, you know, just, you know, hang in there, you have enough to do. And, you know, it's adult, you know, gerontology. So we're talking about our nursing homes and stuff. And, and, um, just letting them know that, like Steve said, we're, we're not going in for routine visits and we're, um, you know, just going to be doing a lot of telemedicine and, and, and figuring out as we go with that. So it's just, it's a, it's going to be a challenging time. So, and we just kind of all have to prepare. And as you guys all have, I have four children at home, I have two in college, so I'm trying to move back. Um, I've got two that are already stir crazy and it's not even snow day, right? You know, so, um, we're going to have to get creative in keeping our kids busy and keeping them separated, um, unfortunately. Um, and I know we all, you know, on the personal side, we all have someone that's probably connected to something in some way. I was just reflecting on that. I have friends in Shanghai, I have friends in Italy, family in Italy. I have a family member that just got back from Italy that's in quarantine after bouncing to Belgium and Ireland and all of that kind of stuff. So, you know, there's, and I have a, you know, a, a demographic of, you know, a 68-year-old father with medical disease. So, you know, it's checking in with your loved ones that are older, that have heart disease, lung disease, diabetes. It's going to be important and thinking through those things. So anyways, thank you.
Thank you.
So again, I want to thank our task force members within the local community that have been actively participating. Um, I will tell you ironically, um, since we've established ourselves 10 days ago, we've never met face to face. Um, but we've communicated probably 100 times through electronic correspondence. So people have been actually very, very responsive, responsive to their requests of the school district or the city or the township specifically. So we thank them. So I want to get into next steps and, and talk about really focusing on the next, really what's going to happen for a three-week time period, um, specifically within the school district. So there's a communication that's prepped. Um, we have a few final edits to make based upon recommendations we actually received after 5:00 this afternoon. They're currently not in here, um, but you've heard about them through Dr. Canowitz or others this evening to try to give families recommendations specifically towards isolation. And that's the word that is specifically being used in reference to, um, feedback that the school district's receiving. So I've gotten some emails, as have other administrators, about sleepovers that took place over the weekend. Um, all the healthcare professionals are saying that is not a good idea. Um, going running is an example, when the running question was asked, going running as the track team, that is not a good idea. Um, so we have to try to educate and that's a piece that's not in here. And we'll provide links based upon the resources provided from the medical professionals related to social or physical distancing. Um, physical was used today because, and Dr. Acton made reference to it during her press conference with the governor. Um, when you think about kids, they view the word social differently than we do as adults. They have social media. They think social media is a good thing. They use it all the time. So social doesn't translate to them the same way. So she started to introduce for the younger generation, a conversation about physical distancing and the six-feet rule, but at the same time, 15-feet rule or 15-foot rule, um, as Dr. Canowitz had referenced specifically. So this communication, I'm going to go through a couple of very specific sections to give you some highlights for what's going to happen in the next three weeks specifically, um, to talk about, um, the school district. So our teachers, faculty and staff in our school district will not be at school tomorrow. Um, within the next 24 hours, we'll come up with the next plan because originally they were returning to campus on Tuesday and Wednesday to plan professionally, to formally release information to parents related to the extended learning opportunities, remote learning opportunities that would be taking place specifically for families that are age-appropriate for pre-K through 12. Um, that likely is going to get modified based upon new information. Again, after 5:00 this afternoon, we'll translate that for staff members, but for family members, I'm going to focus on family. Family members will receive information by Wednesday afternoon about the learning expectations that will continue beginning Thursday, March 19th through Friday, March 27th. So there will be seven days of quote-unquote formal school through remote, remote learning that will be translated by each classroom teacher with learning expectations and guidelines that I'll talk a little bit about in just a couple of minutes. But that information will go home by Wednesday, um, sometime, um, from our classroom teachers based upon the current plan that is in place. Um, the executive order by the governor did make specific reference. So this is one of the frequently asked questions that I've gotten. So I actually sent it to staff today. Um, the executive order through the governor's office that was signed by the, um, director of public health, Dr. Amy Acton, made it clear in the first bullet that schools closed on March 17th at 11:59 PM and reopen on April 3rd until the next executive order or action is taken. That the closure did not include administrators, teachers, staff, vendors or contractors of a school. Again, this was on March 12th. There's new information about how to continue to safeguard those individuals based upon what's happening with, um, the current reality of COVID-19. The administration of each school was charged with determining an appropriate level of access to school during the closure. We've been doing that and we will continue to do that, um, as a school district. And the order does not apply to or exclude activities or events in schools for voting, food service, housing of students at a boarding school, health services, charitable work or any activity approved by the local health department. I will tell you, simply translated for us, the only exception that's truly in place that's still impacting our school district because it's a benefit to our school community is we're actively working with the New Albany Food Pantry in the Height Center to create resources for students that'll benefit during the school closure period. So although the Height Center is mobilizing, and we'll talk about that in a couple of minutes, related to food services in cooperation with the school district through the New Albany Food Pantry, other things on our school campus have been canceled. So the external permits where people rent our school facilities have all been canceled through Sunday, April 5th. Um, we've canceled everything. So the campus will not be used by external persons based upon the recommendations for isolation and non-usage. Spring recess. Um, I've been asked multiple times, is spring break is canceled? The answer is no. Um, spring break is still in the school calendar. It will occur from March 30th through April 3rd. And quite honestly, everyone's probably going to need it, um, from a stress factor standpoint. Um, so yes, there's still teaching and learning that needs to happen between now and the end of the school year. But we also have to come up with a game plan for what it's going to look like, given the current reality and the new information that makes it look like students will not return, um, for the remainder of the school year on site. They will continue remote learning is the expectation in the current conversation. I've been asked if the governor's order extends that as a requirement. The answer is no. The governor's order goes through Sunday, April 5th, technically April 3rd for school, but we wouldn't reopen until the 6th. I believe that will be changed in the coming weeks and be extended by, um, executive order through the governor's office. Athletics, school and community events. Very simplistically, again, everything is canceled. It is not possible, um, to have any quote-unquote practices, athletic events. Everything is canceled, um, across the board. No clubs, no student activities, no coaches are allowed to have any organized participation. The Ohio High School Athletic Association actually issued a referendum that actually will cost the person their position and it will sanction the school district for violation if there's any formalized group activity that's actually administered by that coach, volunteer coach or anyone associated to that team. It is a no contact order for organized sport or play. Food services. So I'm going to invite John Hood, the executive director, director of Student Services, Safety and Security. And then Phil Heitzen here and Angela Douglas are here. Um, and anyone else that would like to participate to talk about our food plan during the school closure period and what we're doing in cooperation with each other, um, to support our families and how the community can participate in that. So John, do you want to start, Angela, Bill, or Sarah, who else?
Good evening. I'm John Hood, the director of Student Services, Safety and Security. And one of the things that I have, uh, the privilege of overseeing is our food service program for the district. Uh, our specific concern is around those students that would be identified in need and specifically rely heavily on school lunches and breakfasts as part of their daily meal plan. And we're in such unfortunate circumstances to, to be partnering with, uh, the New Albany Food Pantry and actually have them located close by here on campus to be able to help service those needs during this, uh, closure. If you look at the news, you'll see that several districts are doing a number of different plans based on their population, based on the number of families that are identified in need within those populations. And some of those involve, uh, school buses that are going out with food. Some of them are involving students coming to campus. I think, um, right now, the plan that we have in place in partnership with the, the Food Pantry is really kind of exceptional in how we can meet the needs of those students, but still follow the doctor's recommendations as trying to preserve distance and trying not to have what we consider to be a, a significant gathering. So right now, we're partnering with the Food Pantry to gather, uh, the resources to able, to be able to provide the food. Uh, the Height Center has, uh, been generous in providing their facility while their, uh, current programming has been diminished. And, uh, we'll have a plan right now where families that have been invited to come can come in almost like a drive-by kind of situation where the Food Pantry even today was pulling resources together here and taking them over to the Height Center, boxed in a way that you'd get about approximately a week's worth of food that would be equivalent to breakfast and lunch during the school time. And so without even having really to get out of your car, you could swing by, pick up the food. And they, I think we have three different dates scheduled right now where families can come by and be provided with those resources. From a food service standpoint, uh, we anticipated being in school on, on Monday. So we had asked our food service coordinator to, uh, shred down kind of inventory, knowing that we had a, a closure coming with the thought that whatever we would have kind of remaining from that inventory, we could donate from a school standpoint to the Food Pantry to help with that. So we've already given some, uh, small amounts of produce that were perishable to them as part of that. And then, uh, the coordinator of the Food Services and I will get together and determine from an inventory standpoint, what do we have remaining now that we don't have school on Monday that we could bring to be as part of that contribution as well. Uh, I feel, um, uh, like the district really has a remarkable partnership with the New Albany Food Pantry and it's a pleasure to be able to service our families in that way. And I really do want to invite one of those representatives to come and to share your perspective, if you have time.
Hi, sorry, I was not prepared to talk. I was just coming to listen, to see what was going on with the Food Pantry. So I'm not ready to say anything, but we are, um, going to be having the next three Wednesdays, the 18th, 25th and April 1st, we will be at the Height Center with, uh, boxes. We've had, uh, I can show you pictures, but I have my phone right now. Lots of donations coming in for us to box up breakfast, lunch. Uh, we did an Amazon wishlist. We put it out to all the communities. Uh, New Albany Chamber did something for us. We have United Methodist. We have all the different churches reaching out to us, asking us what they can do. So we have a lot of food, but we also have a lot of children to do. We're making a list. They've had to, we did a robocall through the school for the free and reduced lunches. So they all come back. They came back to me directly to email me and that's how we're making our list. And then we have a signup genius with our clients from the Food Pantry, which we are reaching out to and making sure we're covering everybody, um, for that part of it. So for donations, it's the Amazon, it's dropping up at the Height, gift cards, um, donate money donations. Uh, we have a list of wonderful products, breakfast, lunch products, oatmeal, cereal, macaroni and cheese, on and on. So.
Thank you, Dr. Hood. We have received tremendous support. So we're really grateful to all of our community partners, the school, New Albany Women's Network, Make Hands Contagious, all the local churches and individuals that are donating. Um, the Amazon wishlist and our most needed items list is on the Healthy New Albany webpage, um, as well as on our website. So if you're looking to donate and, um, want to figure out some specific things that we're asking for, you can go there and do that. And all donations can be dropped off at Healthy New Albany in the building. The building will remain open, so you can take the items and drop them under the stairwell for us. Um, and then online donations, uh, on, uh, Healthy New Albany website as well. You can designate the Food Pantry, they'll come directly to us. So we appreciate the community support.
Is there, do you guys have a preference in terms of like, um, we would most like gift cards or most like the actual?
Not sure. We've got a lot of stuff coming in from Amazon right now. We just got, just started really Sunday, but it started coming in on Saturday. So gift cards would be wonderful because there may be some things that we're not able to do, but also going to the grocery stores right now, I just went to Giant Eagle and there's no rep.
Right.
So it's a little, I'm not quite sure. So food, probably if you could find the food, then that's probably good. But gift cards to local stores will be helpful, um, for the long run, I think. Uh, because we may not be able to.
Sustain.
Sustain this.
Do you have all the volunteer help that you need?
Well, I was just, when, when you said, by me over there, I was just texting that maybe we should cancel all our volunteers from the, from listening to Dr. Canowitz.
Yeah.
That maybe it should be a small core group, no children included, because we had some people bringing their kids. Nada is going to come. We have a mid-Ohio food truck I'm picking up on, uh, order on Tuesday, we're bringing it over there. And we're having people unload it, but I'm thinking we may stick to the New Albany Food Pantry leadership team and cut all volunteers. We've had quite a few teachers reach out and ask to help counselors and I said, wait, but I think I'm going to return and say, I think we better, thanks to Dr. Canowitz, maybe better just keep it.
maybe better just keep it a nice, small, small group that we know.
Thank you, Donna.
Thanks so much.
All the information that was reviewed by Mr. Hood and/or our guests is included in the parent communication. We often get asked if there's a confidentiality piece associated to it. The answer is yes. We do not publicly advertise in any way, shape, or form any of the families or students that participate or benefit for free and reduced lunch within our school district and/or within our community at large. I will just tell you from a reality standpoint, because I think it's shocking for some people when I say it, we have approximately 500 students, 10% of our student population on a daily basis, that qualify for free and reduced lunch within our school district. The need is real within our community, and if anyone can support it, we would greatly appreciate it because it benefits our students and their families. Before we get into the learning aspects associated to what's going to happen in the plan, I just want to review services for students for social, emotional purposes and mental health needs. So we do have the ability to continue to provide some services for students that are actively participating in small groups, social, emotional, or mental health supports through our school district with our school counselors, the school-based, mental health-based services. It will happen probably from a remote perspective, either through teleconferencing or webinar or some type of a FaceTime situation that's currently being arranged, depending on which provider it specifically involves. Those hours are from 8:00 to 3:00, and they'll actually have contact with that person. So our school counselors, mental health specialists, and prevention clinicians that are currently actively working with students to support social, emotional needs or mental health needs will reach out to those students and families directly in cooperation in the leadership of Mr. Hood. Then in addition to that, we're providing resources to families that if you're currently not actively involved, you can always contact Mr. Hood directly or the school counselors directly. They will be actively monitoring all email to the school district. But in addition to that, we have resources that'll be available on our website through the New Albany Plan Local Schools Wellbeing Initiative. So those are being linked in the resource document for parents as a one-stop shop. We're also providing at the recommendation of Nationwide Children's Hospital, the 24-Hour Crisis Line that's available for parents for children under the age of 17. We're also providing the National Suicide Prevention Lifeline as well as the 24-Hour Child Abuse Hotline, all at the recommendations of our school counselors, our prevention clinicians, our mental health specialists, and the local health professionals with whom we work on a daily basis. So we do want to continue beyond just the food reality of making sure our kids do not go hungry, but they also receive the social, emotional, mental health supports that are necessary for them to continue to be successful because they won't physically be on our school campus. Academic expectations. So I'm going to let Mr. Emery talk about the elementary portion, and then Dr. Hamilton and Mrs. LeBeau will specifically talk about the secondary portion for us from a building perspective. Mr. Kramer was unable to be here when we called the emergency meeting, so I want to make it clear that the expectations they're going to talk about begin Thursday, March 19th and extend to Friday, March 27th. This is to get us to spring break. Then we'll talk about what happens after spring break and the next level of planning. So this is the first chunk. So Mr. Emery, you want to talk about our elementary online remote learning opportunities, please?
Thank you, Superintendent Sawyer. It's been a whirlwind for you days, as you can imagine. We had a great day, or a great morning, a professional development plan with our teachers this past Wednesday, thanks to the board's support of our late arrival days. And I think once the closing of Ohio State happened on Monday, Superintendent Sawyer said the wise counsel that we needed to just set aside everything we had planned and move immediately into planning the what-ifs, and that what-if has actually occurred. So our teachers were fortunate to have a head start Wednesday morning, starting to plan for eventual closing of schools. Superintendent Sawyer has challenged us to chunk this, as he said several times. We're looking at this first segment as seven school days. The seven school days for early learning center, primary school, and intermediate children will be largely based on paper packets that were sent home Friday, mixed with online learning opportunities. The teachers have communication ready to roll. That will come out later than Wednesday, and we're going to treat it on a day-by-day basis. We think we'll probably learn as much as the children over the next seven school days on what we need to adjust and what we need to improve to make sure that this next chunk of time is even more effective for the boys and girls. It's been very emotional. Superintendent Sawyer's opened up the schools for staff this morning, and there were teachers, as I met with teachers, who are really having a hard time processing not having these day-to-day interactions with these children they care so much for. So much of what we do is based on relationships, and this notion of doing distance learning is a strong, it's an adjustment. Our blessed Mike Voss, our technology director, has experience in this regard and has provided wonderful counsel, but still, it's difficult. We come to work every day to benefit these children and to not see them. It's a challenge, but we'll get through it, and we just greatly support the board's support of Superintendent Sawyer's and being patient with us as we kind of work through the new portal. So thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Hamilton, Mrs. LeBeau, grade 7 through 12. Just give a highlight, please, of the information that's going home to families.
Thank you, Superintendent Sawyer. As Scott said, this is a very difficult time, very challenging for our staff and our students. And we spent, as did the elementary, we spent our late arrival or the late start on Wednesday, this past Wednesday, actually starting to plan what we were going to do in terms of the academics, just in case, which we knew, you know, we were, it wasn't if, it was when it was going to happen. And so we started planning, and they spent two hours doing a great job of preparing lessons, and I sat in on some of those sessions. I know Donna did as well, and Ken did as well, and all the administrators. So we're not just, you know, this isn't just, we're somewhat prepared, and so we did think about this and we know what we're doing. So for the, do you want to talk about the middle school, and then I'll do short, and high school?
Because we've left one-to-one this year, our middle school teachers are very, they're getting really good at Schoology, and our students are really getting good at Schoology. So they are ready to go. They have worked together. So like Dr. Hamilton said, that Wednesday we planned, and then Thursday, afternoon of Wednesday, and Thursday, and Friday, they've met together, figured out how to make videos and figured out how to annotate while teaching lessons, particularly in our math and in our ELA. And then our social studies and science teachers have figured out how to link the gizmos and to link projects. So we're ready to go when this, when this has to happen. As Mr. Emery said, it is very emotional. We had eighth graders crying on Friday. This is scary. I have gotten emails from our students all weekend long, which I have answered as quickly as possible, typically within 10 minutes, because they're worried, they're scared. I got an email at midnight Saturday night from a seventh-grade boy saying, when can we come back? They're scared. And it's scary for all of us, but we have to, you know, power through this and make sure that we're doing the right thing for our kids.
I can speak from experience on that. My son is a seventh grader, and he is, he is very nervous and scared, but he is also very comfortable with where the teacher, the teachers talked about it on Thursday and Friday, and he's comfortable with where they are, and he knows what he's going to be doing. And Donna's done a great job with her staff to prepare them for this, and Mike Voss, as Scott said, has done a wonderful job of helping our teachers be prepared as well. Now for the high school, not all of the teachers use Schoology to the extent that they do at the middle school, and so at the high school, it's been a little bit of a learning, little bit more of a learning curve, but they are all committed to making sure that students have meaningful lessons and online and in a remote way. So my, Mike, Mike Voss provided all kinds of extra sessions, and they have teachers, Anne Trotter at the high school, and Zach Patterson, and others, Lori Chaney, I know they, they also offered lessons to the teachers who weren't as comfortable, and they've been, they've been getting a lot of business through that. So we're going to, again, do Schoology as much as possible. That's the, that's the platform we're using, and students have their access codes, and they'll be able to access Schoology. Parents can access Schoology, and so I think we're, we're all set to go with that. So, thank you.
I have one other comment, just from a reality check standpoint, that I think everyone has to remember. We have an incredible faculty and staff on our school campus. It is absolutely impossible to replicate the daily service and education that they provide to students within a remote-based learning environment. They're going to do everything they can to continue to challenge, enrich, and meet the academic needs of our students, but it's still not going to be the same of the face-to-face interaction, the relationships that they normally would have with their classroom teacher. So we are going to do our best, but we have to be candid, honest, and open across the United States. A blended learning environment, when you go to asynchronous learning and you look at the realities of what has to happen in a remote learning environment, it's just not the same. So there are going to be challenges. So back to Mr. Emery's first point, to reinforce the chunking, is the word I've been using. So in the first set of dates, we are going to learn from that. So it will be a learning process, and we'll learn what works, what doesn't, and then have conversations about how we improve for the next set of dates that we will publicly plan for. Because we're trying to put it into, from a kid perspective, what does this look like on a daily basis? What's, you know, what's this environment going to be? How am I going to be successful? What is this supposed to look like? You know, do I have a home office as a student? And we're actually recommending that. You will see commentary about that, of creating a structured environment for your child to be successful, to know it's almost like you're going to school while you're at home. So you can't just make it a casual experience. You want to make it actually a school-based experience, and you'll hear some recommendations on that. Mrs. Saunders is here for students with disabilities. Can you just do a quick update on what we're specifically doing for our students with disabilities throughout our school district? Again, members of the leadership team, we've been here all day, so it's been a day. So I'm just calling on them, they're kind of like looking at me like, I didn't know! And I'm like, yeah, but Michael came in at 3:00 AM, so now it's your turn to help me something.
All of the reasons why we love him. It's a great leader. So for our students with disabilities, we are going to continue to provide services as much as possible in an online format. Teachers will be connecting with parents, making sure that lessons are explained, if they need extra directions, when and if appropriate, setting up possibly some related services when it's safe. We just can't schedule that right now. We will talk about compensatory services if and when needed, and that's the guidance that's coming from, from the state as well. IEP and ETR meetings will all continue to be scheduled and held. We're prepared to do those from home. We have Google Hangouts that we can conference everyone in on. We can share the documents. We can talk through it with parents, or just do, if they're not available for, to participate during the meeting via their computers, we can do it by phone. So all of those meetings will still be held, will still be in compliance. The only thing that we have not figured out how we're going to be able to make sure we do, and again, the state and US Department of Ed will continue to give us guidance on our students that might need evaluated initially. And so just be patient with us. We will continue to work with you. We're here, our teachers are committed, they're amazing. They have spent countless hours trying to prep and figure out ways that they can make videos, ways that they can reach their kids, links, setting office hours, times for parents to be able to reach them, giving personal cell phone numbers, which is not always advised, you know, in a legal world. But our teachers are phenomenal, and we'll do whatever it takes. I had some coming in today to gather materials to take to parents' homes for some of our most significant kids. So we're here, we're a team, we're a great team, and under great leadership. Thank you.
Mr. Voss, student technology and what's going to happen for technology across the school district, the one-to-one versus access for internet resources and student help desk?
So as mentioned earlier, students in grades four through nine already have their iPads, so they took those devices home with them. Fourth graders typically leave their iPads at school, but on Friday, we undid all the cards, and then they took them home with them. Actually, started Thursday, they took them home with them. So those grades are, they have their equipment at home. For grades 10 through 12 that don't have enough devices assigned to them, we did identify students that needed a device at home, didn't have a home computer or a home tablet to use, so we loaned them a Chromebook. So we spent Friday afternoon getting the signatures, getting all the paperwork done, loaning those. So those went home with them on Friday. We did the same thing for grades one, two, and three at the primary school. For grades one and two, they also got Chromebooks. Grade three, they actually have iPads assigned to them, similar to the fourth grade. We decided they would stay here unless the child, unless the student needed a device at home, and then we let them take that iPad home with them. And then just today at the Earl LaRaine Center, we did the same thing. There are iPads in that building, so identified families came in today, and we loaned them the iPads they could take home, so their, their children can get online and do any online activities that are offered by the teachers. So as much as we can, we tried to cover the district, pre-K through 12, making sure students had a device, either their own device at home to use or one of our devices loaned to them. So that's been taken care of, again, as much as we could over the last couple days. We've also done some other things, have in the backend of Schoology that I mentioned several times, we have installed other applications in Schoology, some video conferencing things that can happen in there, so teachers can, if they choose to, conduct a virtual session within the environment. They give a little bit of a personal interaction where you can see and hear the teacher's voice with the kids. Don't expect that to be used heavily, especially early. We want teachers to kind of ramp up slowly with this, since it is new to them and kids. We're trying not to introduce too many new tools. We want them to, want the students to continue to use what they're used to using, or what they've been taught how to use, without adding too many new tools to the mix. The other big thing that we have to think about is support. Typically, when a student has a problem with an iPad at school, or a teacher has a problem, they put in a tech ticket, and one of the technicians helps them out face-to-face. Obviously, that can't happen now. So we did set up the, our technicians to be able to work remotely from home. They're able to plug in their office phone at home, so they can use that phone for phone calls. They can call families, they can call teachers, and try to walk them through some phone support. We also have some tools where they can see remotely what's going on in the device, but it can be a challenge, especially if for some reason the device gets offline, then you can't do any remote things with it. So it will be a challenge as we do it, but as best we can, we still have our ticketing system, and then we still have a, we have now the phone, the phone lines, which we populated in the document, either if the technicians have to stay at home or if they can come to school. And the last thing, there are several families in the district that identify not having internet connectivity. So the document that was created does show how a couple ISPs, internet providers, are offering free service to those families that need it during this time. So there's directions in there, phone numbers for them to call, so they can get temporary internet service set up should they need it. So we'll do our best to support things, but it will be a challenge to do remote support and that will, we'll just do our best and adjust as we need to.
This is a comment for clarification. So we're appreciative of the fact that these internet providers are willing to provide solutions to families in our school district that may not have it. The reality is, they put that out statewide, so I don't know how long it's going to take for them to get service. So we've had conversations specifically with classroom teachers to prepare information that would be shared with students that cannot go online. The public libraries are closed. So we've talked about that specifically, and we'll have independent learning opportunities for students that are unable to access the internet dominantly at the secondary level based upon the content that's being provided. We did create a sample school day schedule. This goes back to structure, just to try to give kids an idea. We are encouraging healthy breaks, we're encouraging lunch, we're encouraging stretch and mobility within the home, different types of activities. So we created a mock-up schedule that kids can look at, just to give an idea of what it would look like to be at school and home for conversations. Clearly, this is going to look different for families based upon the home structure and what's specifically happening with parental support. But we did give some extra, or some activity ideas, just to try to plant seeds of things that you should be doing. It's not screen time. You're not in front of a school or a screen from 8:00 till 3:00. That's not the goal. There's a wide variety of activities, including creativity for the lessons that the art teachers have created that are not technology-based. So there's still specific activities that'll be recommended by classroom teachers that have no use of technology whatsoever. Technology is just being used as a communications tool to share with families specifically what the specific assignments are or expectations from each classroom teacher. So again, this will go home as part of our packet and information for families. And we have a section on resources and information because of frequently asked questions we're getting, so we put in the getting, so we put in the coronavirus line specifically for COVID-19 at the Ohio Department of Health for self-reporting period processes or questions. So if you have specific questions as a family member, we would strongly encourage you to call the COVID-19 hotline at the Ohio Department of Health directly during the recess period. We put in hyperlinks to specific documents from the Ohio Department of Health or other resources that have been given to the school district that could benefit the families, for safety and wellness tips specifically. So we have all this stuff that's basically put together, it'll be ready for communication to families tomorrow, so this is coming out as an update to tell them our next steps, despite the fact that school is closed. So we will finalize this, I will tell you, by late morning tomorrow, so that lots of families, probably around lunchtime, so they actually have an update, because tomorrow's the calamity day for what to anticipate and expect. In that same vein, there'll be additional information that's specifically communicated to our faculty and staff about what's going to happen in relationship to the expectations within the executive order, that work has to continue during today's web, or today's press conference with the Director of Public Health, Dr. Acton, and the Governor. There was also an encouragement back to employers. We are an employer. We hire teachers, non-teachers, classified support staff, and personnel across all of our ranks, there are about 650 employees in our school district. During the press conference today, there was a strong recommendation to try to go back and reevaluate, given the fact that isolation is coming as part of the conversation, beyond just the physical, social distancing and what that specifically means, to try to continue to find ways to consider work from home. So that will continue amongst the leadership team tomorrow, so that we can adequately communicate with our faculty and staff about what those expectations will look like as we enter the rest of the week. Tomorrow, again, is a calamity day, faculty and staff are not on site. We will give them a plan by the end of day tomorrow about what Tuesday and Wednesday are going to specifically look like, to then enter into remote learning opportunities specifically for our students. So I'm going to pause there for COVID-19. I can answer any questions that the Board of Education may have. This is a fluid process, and I'm going to tell you it continuously changes, to some days, it's been minute by minute. Our leadership team, the faculty and staff, have done a tremendous job in being patient and responding. It can become very emotional when you actually start processing the realities of what's coming. Dr. Acton has been a very calming force as the Director of Public Health, and her communications that she's been providing, to try to help people ease into this conversation and what those expectations are going to be moving forward. But very succinctly, I will tell you, we as a school district are actively planning that students will not be permitted to return to our school campus for the remainder of the 2019-2020 school year. So I don't know what all that means yet, but we are, again, we're looking at this in time periods, and we will plan for whatever that means, based upon what the State Department of Education or the General Assembly through the Governor's Office actually decide. As that information becomes available, we clearly will communicate it. But I just don't have all those answers tonight. This is an iterative process that's very fluid, and we will continue to keep everyone up to date as much as we possibly can when the information becomes available. Are there any questions that I can answer?
So you made it pretty clear, but I just want to reiterate, because we've heard, and he kind of walked it back, the Governor at one point in time said three-week spring break. He came back and says, "What do you mean?" But the intention is, is that, yes, unfortunately, we are in a very unique situation, but the intention is, for the next two weeks, our students will have plenty of work to keep them busy and continue to learn. There will be a spring break where, give everybody a chance to kind of breathe, and if and when it's announced that we're not coming back after spring break, the expectation is that learning then will continue. We're not, it's not as though, as if right now, it's not as though the year's being shut down, kids are still expected to learn.
Yes.
And teachers are expected to teach.
Teachers are expected to teach, correct. So I'm going to put it in this context of reality, because this has been what I've learned throughout this whole process of trying to understand COVID-19, the medical, and fortunately, I have a task force that works with us, and all the literature and information and research has been produced that we get access to. So in the chunking, my word, not scientific, of time, I'm looking at the first seven days for academic purposes. So tomorrow's calamity, teachers get Tuesday and Wednesday for professional opportunities to finish their videos, online work, resources, and everything else dominantly for students in grades four through 12, because we sent initial materials home for students in pre-K through three on Friday. So four through 12, but all teachers will continue their planning, their work, and communications, and prep that has to go to the families by Wednesday. So our first remote learning opportunity is Thursday the 19th through Friday the 27th, that's chunk number one. And then there'll be communications that happen from the teachers, giving all the specifics, the directions, and the expectations, and the actual assignments. We go on spring break, I'm going to just forecast. The Governor comes out with a new executive order that says students are not permitted to return to school on Monday, April 6th. I'm going to forecast right now, if that happens, Monday the 6th and Tuesday the 7th of April will likely become the next 48-hour period that teachers will have to continue their grade-level department, grade-level band work for planning purposes for the next set of remote learning. That will likely take us to at least April 20th. April 20th is a magic date for me, because it happens to be the incubation period necessary post-spring break, that we would be able to return to school safely if that would ever happen as a potential. But given all the information I continue to receive, and the guidance of our local officials that are serving on the task force, as well as Dr. Acton, and then access to Joe Mazzola as the Franklin County Health Commissioner, I don't believe that that's likely. So then we'll have to create the next chunk of time that will take us into May, and then the last chunk of time that will finish the school year. So realistically, I'm looking at four blocks of time potentially that we will use to learn from each time, to continue to increase expectations of what we can do to best meet the needs of kids. It's going to be a fluid process, but realistically, standing here tonight, I'm telling you publicly, I do not anticipate students are returning for the 2019-20 school year. As much as that disappoints everyone, this is unprecedented. Mrs. Kalanowski?
I just want to take a moment to recognize the extraordinary leadership you've provided the district. I have got so many comments from parents on, you know, the excellent communications coming from you. I know behind the scenes, you all have been working together tirelessly to provide up to the second communications, and the foresight you had, all of you, to plan in advance and use that Wednesday morning, the teamwork that we see across our community, supporting our schools, supporting students who, you know, need support with food. I just want to recognize the excellent work that's been done here by you, the administration, the teachers, and our community. It's overwhelming during this, you know, really difficult period. It's a real bright spot to see everybody come together, and so grateful for all of your hard work and leadership.
Thank you. It's been a team effort, and we're really fortunate. We live in a wonderful community, we have outstanding kids, wonderful families, but our community partnerships are like no other. And I will tell you, the staff, from a leadership perspective, of the administrative team, to the teachers, and then our classified non-teaching staff, they've been tremendous. It's been hard, it's been emotional. Principals and other administrators in the school district, as part of the cabinet, the directors, people are tired, and it's been an iterative process. You know, we get one thing done, and then we find out brand-new information 60 minutes later, and so the two hours before that gets thrown out the window, and we start all over again. But everyone's been really wonderful to do that, because at the end of the day, it's about 5,053 kids that we're going to help be successful, despite the fact they can't come to our campus. Are there any other questions I can answer? I know it's a lot of information, it doesn't, it's a tip of the iceberg for what's really happened in the course of the last 12 days, but it gives you some idea that we do have a plan. It will be fluid, it's not going to be perfect, we are going to learn from it, but at the end of the day, we're going to help our kids be successful through this very, very hard time in the world, and that's really the reality of it. Paul?
Michael Moore, a question, you probably already said it, and I apologize as the dad here. You've mentioned the 18th and 27th, Thursday, as being the chunk. Tomorrow's a calamity day, Tuesday, Wednesday, what's the recommendation for parents with their kids?
Stay home, if at all possible, do some activities as a family. Everything's closing, so you can't really go anywhere, and really, they don't want you going anywhere, is the recommendations that continually come out. Play in the backyard, but again, if you're doing anything within your neighborhoods, be conscious of social, physical distancing and the recommendations that come from it. There should be no group play, you should cease sleepovers, they should not be happening. We found out of another one this afternoon. So I would strongly advise you, based upon everything that I've read, and all the meetings that I've participated in with these medical professionals, I know it's not convenient, and it's going to be hard. Nurse Brian talked about his own family, but you've got a level set within your house, this is a new normal, and the worst, unfortunately, is yet to come. Fair, Brian?
Yes, absolutely.
I have a question.
We'll wait until public participation, no more questions, that's okay. Thanks.
Are there any other questions from the board? Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Actually, public participation right now. So that is the next thing on the agenda. Do we have any?
I have a question. I have a question. Thanks, I have a question about commencement.
You can ask it.
So for public participation, we just need you just to state your name and your address, and then ask your question.
My name is Stephanie Lobel, 4012, St. George's College, New Orleans, Ohio. Question is, will there be a commencement? It's here.
There's going to be something, I don't know what it is, so I'm just being honest. We want every kid to have the experience of graduation and have a formalized commencement. It will depend upon the medical order that's in place at that point in time, by the State's Department of Health, the Governor's Executive Order, or a local order from the Franklin County Department of Health. So I don't have that crystal ball to get us to Memorial Day weekend to know. I'm hopeful that all of this is going to change by the end of May, and seniors actually can experience part of what truly is the senior year, and their ability to do that. So as soon as we know something, we will communicate it, but right now, it's to be determined.
And if they don't, will they be able to graduate?
I believe the answer will be yes, but state statute currently doesn't permit that unless you meet the academic requirements and the specific credit, earning requirements of credit required for graduation. I believe our students will, because we're continuing remote learning. If learning completely stopped on Monday, and they did nothing for the rest of the school year, they may not have the requirements met by state statute, barring any changes in state law, to meet those requirements. I don't believe that's going to be an issue, because our students will continue learning remotely, as long as they actively participate. I can't make that happen, I want that to happen, and then they will be certified for graduation.
Thank you.
Thank you. I do think, I mean, this kind of brings up a whole issue, and it's probably not, we're probably not prepared to discuss it right now, but there are a number of things that happen in the spring, for seniors, one, you have juniors that I'm sure have college plans that they're working on, tests that they need to be taking. You've got athletics, that's kind of, it sounds like it's potentially going to be wiped out in the spring. So there are, there are a number of things, I just don't think we have all the answers for yet, we're just going to have to continue to go day by day, and as we hear from the Governor, and to your point, there may be some legislative things that need to happen, and the legislature's already said that they're not coming back for several weeks, so we are in a very unique situation.
I agree with that, but I think when push comes to shove, if it actually has to happen, there'll be flexibility based upon the commitment of the Governor to date for what that can look like, and I believe we'll do everything we can that's in the best interest of students. I don't think students will be the victims of COVID-19. I know it's going to impact their learning, and it's going to look differently, but we're going to do everything we can to help them be successful, and they'll meet those requirements to get to graduation. All those other experiences and spring sports, and I know kids are going to be disappointed, but again, not my crystal ball, I'm just telling you what I currently know, I would, it is very, very unlikely that there will be any spring sports season at all. We've suspended pay to participate in the school district, I know I wasn't asked that, I will tell you that for spring sports. Payments were due on Monday, but we've sent notifications to the families about what the process will be to refund in the event that actually does come to fruition and there is no spring sports season. So we're working through that whole process. But again, it's day by day, minute by minute, hour by hour, what's the new information available, and what do we have to act upon based upon what's happening within the school district?
Any other points of discussion as well? Moving on, then, we, our next item is treasure items, A through C, so have a motion, please.
Second.
Kalanowski, Mr. Voss, second. Let's change this.
On the financial report, we continued through February to run over collections for our president. I do expect we've started to receive our first half settlement, so I believe the $1.8 million that is above what we projected in the last settlement will be closer to what we projected for the entire year, so closer to that, still a little bit higher, but not exactly, not the $1 million or much higher. And we continue to run about $1.6 million under expenditures at this point in time, and I expect that to continue. However, we do not know what the impact of COVID-19 will have on the district, so be careful there. The second action for treasures items are appropriations modifications. You can see what the increases are with the explanations next to it. I would point out that we do have an increase to the O-11 fund, which is where we collect for, sorry, I'm tired. Eagles, Eagles Ness in some cases, sorry. So we, if you remember, we were taking a portion of those funds out of those two accounts to help pay for the playground equipment, so in order to do that, we have to bump up those appropriations, because we did not plan on spending that much out of there. And then the third action item is amounts, accepting the amounts and rates. This is for the current 2020 to collect in 2021. Last month, we approved 2019 to collect in 20. The county auditor dropped this, that's those, and then they amended them. This is actually setting 2020 amounts and rates to collect in 2021. Question?
Questions? Non-cientific, we'll call, please.
Ms. Kalanowski? Yes, Mr. Newell.
Yes.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
President, Colin?
Yes. Now, a motion, please, on superintendent's items, seven A through D. So.
Second.
Mr. Bush? Kalanowski, the second. Mr. Sorensen.
Thank you, President Colin. Members of the Board of Education, letter A for personnel or standard employee action items, we are proceeding as business as usual, pending outcomes that would be required from an employment perspective related to changes in COVID-19. So although I just said I don't think there's a sports season for spring sports, we're approving coaches for spring sports, we're continuing with normal daily practice until we actually learn otherwise. So those informational items are on, they were scheduled for approval for this month, so all the other action items related to standardized employment are typical for employment action within our school district. Letter B for general business this evening. Letter number two, I specifically want to point out, it's the upgrades of the firewall for safety and security purposes from cybersecurity dominoes within our school district. The good news is, we've applied for 40% reimbursement for the expenditure through E-Rate. We're fairly confident that we should be successful in receiving that, but you have to go through the formalized process. We have to get it scheduled for actually summer upgrade, so it's on tonight's agenda ultimately for recommendation for approval. Number three this evening, I'm going to recognize publicly the three students who have successfully met the graduation requirements in class of 2020. They have petitioned the high school principal, my office, and the Board of Education to be recognized for early graduation, to continue in be recognized for early graduation, to continue into their pursuits for post-secondary high school experiences. So we're very proud of the kids for finishing early, and they have met all the requirements and are certified for graduation. They will have the opportunity to return to participate in the commencement exercise for the class of 2020 as a result of their success. Letter C for donations, as always, we're very, very grateful for the generosity of our entire community and everything they do to support our students on a daily basis for the fill-in profit contributions we receive. Letter D this evening, this is a significant action item based upon what's happening specifically with COVID-19, and it's a board resolution for recommendation, and I'm just going to read it because of the significance of what it actually does within our school district for continuity of daily instruction and expectations to meet the needs of our kids. So whereas on March 12, 2020, Governor Dewine, in response to the COVID-19 crisis, ordered all kindergarten through 12th grade students in Ohio close to students, or, excuse me, 12th grade schools in Ohio close to students for a period of three weeks, and that during this period, staff members should continue to report to school as directed by administrators. And whereas on March 13, 2020, Governor Dewine acknowledged that the mandatory closure of all school buildings to students may be extended beyond the initial three-week period. Now therefore, the New Orleans Plain Local Schools Board of Education hereby authorizes the superintendent and treasurer during the time period that New Orleans Plain Local Schools buildings are closed to students to take any and all actions necessary to maintain the educational program and provide for the safety of all students and staff, including but not limiting to directing staff as appropriate, implementing curriculum as appropriate, and complying with orders and guidance issued by the federal and state government and agencies in response to the COVID-19 crisis. It's parliamentary, but there's differences of opinions from a legal perspective to fulfill the graduation requirements that you actually authorize, because it's not a blended learning course at the high school that we're talking about, this is students participating in remote learning. So although we have a blended course at the high school where a student would normally be taking part of this course online, this is actually all students having access to remote learning opportunities. So from a legal perspective, for extreme caution, our board council's recommending that it is a good thing for you to do to go on record, to adopt what the requirement is within the state of Ohio, to ensure that there is no adverse impact to our kids down the road. Are there any questions I can answer about these agenda items?
Got questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Ms. Kalanowski? Yes.
Yes.
President McCollum?
Yes. That takes us to a second opportunity for public participation, and with none, then I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Ms. Newmoff, second by Mr. Bush. Roll call, please.
Mr. Newmoff?
Yes.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Ms. Kalanowski? Yes. President McCollum?
Yes. We are adjourned. Our next meeting is scheduled for April 13.